Okay, we have the agenda in front of us. Does anyone have any changes or amendments to the agenda? If not, all the motion to approve the.
When they go on to approve, we have been.
It's very often. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye opposed? Uh approval of the minutes. We have the minutes in front of us. Any uh changes, additions, corrections to the minutes?
Right, it didn't switch.
If not, a motion to approve. Second, another motion.
Your head, nobody hears your head.
No, no, what I'm saying is I, but I wasn't here for this meeting.
Oh, you know, okay.
And after voting on it.
No.
Nah.
So you got two.
You okay with this?
Uh.
No, you did your second. So we have a motion to, to.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay. Uh, okay, uh, a motion to approve the minutes. We got it. The second, uh, any comments or questions?
I have a comment on the, the agenda.
Okay.
Sorry, I missed that.
Okay.
Shouldn't the um personal care home be an under unfinished business?
Big table.
But even a big table, oh, I just so we keep track that the fact that they're there and right table next to it.
Alright, um.
I don't know if we have to amend it. I want to worry about this agenda, but just going forward, just so we don't lose track of it.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll put it in the minutes that we're gonna amend it for the.
Just to add unfinished and that they tabled. Yes, okay.
Okay, so uh this group of minutes, uh we, we had a motion, we had a second. Any comments or questions on the minutes? All in favor? Aye opposed? Lance and Meadows, Marshall Street Shopping Center Land Development Plan.
Yeah. So, we've received uh this plan in Marshall Square Shopping Center uh. Uh, we've begun taking a look and reviewing it. Uh generally speaking, uh they're essentially looking to convert the one building within the shopping center uh into a combination of self-storage units in the back. Then uh select flex space, basically look at the segmented to be able to basically round out the individual uh uses. Um, at this point, you know, I think it's a suitable application to accept for review and then, you know, we would issue a review letter in advance for next month's meeting. So I think at this point, it would really just be a motion to accept the application.
It's complete and final and, okay. And every, everyone knows where this is.
Yeah, by post and uh where it was proposed.
With that, the new two-story building.
Okay, in the back.
Yes.
Okay.
Let's figure it.
They've already boxed it out and built it, right?
Hmm.
The steel there and everything.
Yes. They're not gonna need that deal for this.
I don't know, but it depends, yeah, what they're.
Some of the deals are like this big bend in it like a theater.
Like a theater. I don't.
Well, it's.
Yeah, so, but yeah, we'll get into this, just next to middle, so.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Okay, alright, so uh would anyone like to make a motion to accept this? I made my motion to accept the plants of middle for the Marshall Street Shopping Plaza.
Thanks, definitely.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye, aye opposed? Okay. Uh, plan reviews unfinished business. So. Um, do you wanna, Beth, do we wanna put anything in here to get on the minutes?
I think she's already stated that we're gonna put under there the personal care home.
Okay.
And that it was tabled.
Okay, and there was a, there was a meeting out there. Um.
Yesterday. Yesterday, yeah.
Yesterday, that was only yesterday?
It was, yeah.
Yeah.
It was in the morning.
With, with the, with the pen dot. And uh, it's uh, it's, it's gonna be interesting um the progress of that, so it's complicated because it's, it has a right of way and it's the, the, the road is not on the right of way. Hmm, what, what's there? So, I, I did speak to the fire chief and the Marshall Creek Fire Company. And he said that they be uh fourteen feet wide by fourteen feet high. That's, that's their requirements to get, you know, with piece of equipment. He has no problem getting in there uh to service it as long as the openings cut that big.
Okay. Yeah, because I know that Bush Hill had gotten back to their engineer as well. So there's some emails that he had sent over correspondence that they had. Uh, I think she really spoke to width at all, but she wanted better lighting along that access and similar clearing the vegetation still, but it was to get any help, so. Uh, there was one, one other request that she had made, so, okay.
They had asked for uh to not to have to spend any money to improve that road, you know?
Well, they didn't wanna pay.
They didn't wanna pay it and everything, but it is, it, we went back there and it's rough. It's rough the way it is right now.
It is rough. I mean, I don't think, I, I don't think they can um leave it even with gravel on there. There's no way you could, you can scrape that clean in the winter and salt it and be able to get emergency equipment back there. I mean, that's my opinion, but.
Especially given the nature of the business they're.
Right, right.
They're putting balls, you know, it could be two in the morning, you know, and that's uh, and it's uh, it's, it's a rough road to get in, so we can cut open. I don't think it's enough.
Yeah.
Uh.
Bob, okay, so is it fire chief you said you spoke with? Uh, were they planning to officially respond back to their engineer? If not, like, if you wanted to recommend
Keep it down.
Some type of, some type of letter or email
Yeah, yeah.
to moralize what they're asking.
I asked him to come tonight if he wanted to, and he said he, he couldn't come tonight, but I'll ask him to email over.
Yeah, because I know, I know that they tried reaching out and they haven't gotten a response yet, so I think having a good directly to them, people probably preferred.
Okay.
But even with the cutout, you're saying that it's not good.
The, the, the road base, uh, they didn't know, they didn't wanna improve it. They didn't wanna pay it, but it's, it's a gravel road right now. It's.
Got big, it's rough, yeah.
And it, and it looks like there's another pathway back there that Nick and I noticed a road going off to the right. So we don't know if there's another home or something back there.
Further access, right? Is there something behind that, I'm so clear, or?
Well, then, uh, that's what came up at the meeting the other day is that there's two more parcels back there.
Yeah.
That had access through that original right of way.
Yeah, I guess it was one of, it's one of those things where we'll take a look at the deeds for those to see, you know, I you know, we have limited information in our discretion, but it's probably available, but um I didn't remember on their deed a specific reference to an easement granted to other properties um for that purpose. So, yeah, it's certainly going to pull a cap though, but I don't think, you know, the that's gonna determine the, the width of the driveway access that might be required if they didn't serve those properties further to the sound um. But Penn, I was basically saying there was already enough properties connecting to it that it was gonna require, you know, at least the twenty-foot, you know, to serve those additional properties that are tying in.
The road?
Yeah, one, twenty feet. Because there were, there, there's technically three properties already that would be accessed that.
So are those three properties, um, the other additional parcels, are they in R1 or are they in commercial C1?
Um, that's a good question. I, I can't think off the top of my head with the zoning map in front of me. I know that the ones that are closer to two oh nine, those are C1. Um, yeah, I can't remember where that transition happens at, between those districts.
That particular property in my mind should be changed to residential. It shouldn't be a commercial place there.
Well, we're beyond that now.
That's it, yeah.
Yeah, we're just addressing it, but the subject, so, okay.
It's the, just not related somewhat, but is the improvements being done out front? Is that front because of the tractor supply?
Right now.
So they're having to do improvements around the others.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. And Penn thought made that point too. Tractor supply is finishing what, what Scotty's never did. In order, in order to get their, their.
I just was wondering, I didn't notice that.
They're milling, they're milling out actually the uh whatever acceleration line, whatever, whatever was just, that was required and.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, this, like, I did say that, uh, bonding would have been a good idea, so we, we didn't have bonding on it. They should, right, they should have bonding. On Scotty's and, yeah, oh, alright, okay, uh. So, uh, next up, Matty Buck.
Good to see everyone again.
Just, just introduce yourself for the record, just.
Sure, I'm South, I also am the engineer from, we're a foundation builder from all up. Um, just from all is the um operating member of Mount Ebo Apartments. So let's see, uh, develop the ninety-six units that are currently uh constructed uh right off of Mount Ebo Road down here and uh he had purchased this uh two plus, two plus acre property um that actually is the Mount Ebo property um surrounds that property and so this one, it's kinda just making that property whole again, so that, you know, that whole frontage of Mount Ebo will all be one property. So we're proposing to consolidate this lot into the Mount Ebo property. It'll all be managed by the same owner as, as this, so um, it'll be under private ownership. Um, one person will be operating and maintaining the um safe features for the project. Um, when they constructed this portion, they made sure to put um a water line that was inspected by the water uh company and uh sewer line was also inspected by the uh by the engineer, who's, who's uh Christian Fairman's groupie uh because of the kind of carryover problem. Uh, but they, they expected, so the large stuffs going across the road, we don't have to open cut the, the road that's already in there. And what we're proposing to do, that thirty, thirty units uh very similar to uh what's already constructed um instead of having um four towers, we're gonna have five in here. Um, there'll be six units in each of these towers, two on the first floor, two on the second floor, two on the third floor, you know, one on each side of those there. Um, we're proposing to do um purpose pavement again, uh, you know, we've noticed that it seems to be holding up very well and it's definitely functioning very well um with the rest of the property. The rest of, I don't know if everyone remembers, the rest of the property is already paved with uh purpose pavement and uh as is recommended by the uh joint ordinance, I think that's something that the township is looking to, to favor and uh we're, we continue to propose that for this, that'll be for the more quality aspect of it. Uh, the one sixty-seven um trench area is actually in no detention, which means they don't want you to detain water at all, so it could actually cause further backup of the, of the streams. It'd be detained because this uh towards the bottom of the watershed. So what we would do is we have this for the water quality, the, the purpose pavement, which will allow for filtration, it's the uh, the groundwater and uh any overflow would just be discharged uh during the remodels. Um, one of the, one of the comments by, by your engineers regarding this, this access was only meant for emergency access, that was, those were needed. Um, you know, the, right now, we, we, we've taken a look at the turning radius and uh your largest, the uh largest anticipated uh fire truck would be able to make this turnaround to get to this area. Uh, and so what Ben has suggested uh is that, actually, this might not be needed at all, um, because there was certainly a backup into the storage unit and then come back out again, or they could even, um, you know, there's already two, there's already two driveways, a second, third in that short period, uh, you know, short lane, a long time you know, would be too much even if it was just for uh emergency access. So uh we, we do one of a couple of things, we could, we could just grass it and uh give it as an emergency access, uh, but it wouldn't be paved to, you know, to. You know, in addition to the gate would help promote people not going, not to use that or anything, uh, any access, but uh do you do that or would you just, I think preferably it would be to eliminate this, just have a, just have the sidewalk continue across here.
And then curb it.
Or whatever. Yeah, do, do curb it here. Um, to make sure that, you know, I mean, no runoff could get off the site anyways, you go right down to the purpose pavement, but if there's any, any sort of catch or failure, which we never anticipated, which would flow into the storm super that's uh posed and get it out to the bottom. Um, the, the damage, we do have uh a little search letter from the water company. Um, who, who do we submit to to get the, the sewer capacity?
Uh, so Joan Oisen, um, is the sewer department, um, manager person here, so, um.
I can give you. Joan, what was her?
Joan, it's uh Oisen, W O I S O N.
Okay.
I think I got that right. I think it's O N, right?
I think so.
Okay, alright.
Yeah.
Uh.
And would you do the review for this sort of capacity or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So basically, the uh, the pump station that was put in largely to serve the apartments um was done assuming the ninety-six apartments uh originally and then uh we did like an extra forty EDUs to serve other single-family houses in the area in case on lots were to fail. Um, some was set aside for the Wendy's as well and just some other props in the area. So the additional thirty of units going in, it's above and beyond, it was kind of initially agreed upon with the design of that pump station, so the thought is we'll go through DP to get it re-rated up to the additional capacity. Preliminary look doesn't look like that means any actual modifications to the pump station, uh, might be just some slight changing of you know, pump levels and stuff like that to make it work, but uh, yeah, I think I recommend just one of the conditions being that uh, you know, Mount Ebo Apartments basically assumes the, the cost associated with getting uh the pump station rerated uh at the, at any modifications made in the pump station to serve the additional units.
So, so we still wanna have that extra capacity?
Right, right, so, yes.
This is what, what comes out, so to keep those forty, I guess roughly.
Right, that's still available to the surrounding area, yeah.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that, that makes sense.
Sure.
Are you, are you, yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Easy. Uh, South, do you wanna, uh, Ben? We, we don't have to do all, I mean, we just highlight what you're, you're, you know.
Yeah, I think.
I don't think right of your grade, however you wanna do it, fine.
Yeah, yeah, no, that, it's a, it's, it's a pretty extensive review, so whatever.
Yeah, and honestly, and, and again, I um, I speak with South, ask him a question about before. I initially reached out, of course, in the letter out, and then because of just uh time getting crunched, I sent it out before speaking of, so I spoke to him earlier this morning. The only other two things I think worth mentioning is that the, the grading shown kind of close to that green areas, the like forest wetland area that was delineated previously. Uh, it does encroach with the answers, like the twenty-five foot inner buffer and then it's the twenty-five foot outer buffer. Uh, that does encroach into the inner buffer and for the stormwater management ordinance, they say really no grading within there, so um, I think there was talk about maybe a retaining wall or something to be able, or just steeper slopes to be able to pull that disturbance back from the edge of the wetlands as being potential change. And then the other one was just uh, were, were you able to get an answer on the center line and right of way line? Does it need to shift the, our building like a few feet over what's currently shown?
Yeah, we're gonna have to, to shift that over just slightly.
Okay.
Uh, I think it's a quarter feet.
Okay.
So the building's be a quarter foot shift, the, the building's out that way because our front building said that is um was based on the twenty-five foot concept from this line instead of from the center line of, of the road later. So, um, if that mentioned, the ordinance does require from the center line of the road, so you'd have to make that adjustment. But it would be the difference between, you can, you can see the center line looking along the things, it would, it would be the, that would be the shift over.
Maybe, and, and this is my question, you already went through the conditional use for the first ninety-six um units and the first section in my letter, um basically uh says, yeah, it's on the second and third page, basically goes through that prior list of condition. I think it might be, maybe we just walk through those, you could talk about how they're addressed or you know, I mean, we can just highlight which ones we think are still relevant or which ones are no water, um, and then we can from there see, is there anything else that we thought was worth on it?
Yeah, because I know the first time we actually made you screen or you were gonna have to screen that that parcel or something, right? You're gonna put a bunch of trees. And did you actually end up having to do that or you, you?
No, we actually held off on that portion for, for a number of reasons. There was some excess dirt.
Yeah.
Um, available on the site, so we stockpiled it.
Okay.
And because we were stockpiling, we know that with this project, we're gonna need dirt.
Yeah, yeah.
So why hold dirt off? Just to hold dirt back, so to stockpile it there. And I knew I created an agreement to purchase the land and so the, there's very little from the first development plan that's not completely, but one of them is the buffer between the two projects.
Okay.
And that's actually become an obstacle to getting permanent COs for our first four buildings because technically we haven't completed the landscape plan. So we're gonna have some mechanics and how, how do we, how do we complete the first plan? Make sure that everybody understands that we've met our obligation and then now shift whatever else has to happen onto the second plan.
Because you now own that parcel, so.
Yeah.
There'd be no, exactly.
But there are some landscape requirements per acre and things of that, so how we go about changing from the plan that we were working on to a new plan is a question for your council, I, I believe, you know, do we take this now and say that project number one is complete, move into a maintenance agreement and then start with a new plan?
Would you modify your existing?
Yeah, I mean, we could potentially put it as a condition for this conditional use, say that the um, the vegetation that we proposed here will be added to the required vegetation um for this project.
And eliminate it off of the old project.
Will not be required as part of that, right? So this way, you know, if there, there are requirements for, for each number, like every ten stalls, I think, apartment, one tree and for every uh, you know, frontage, you need a certain number of trees. So that, that number of trees, uh, it doesn't really make sense because of that, there's no buffer now, it's all part of the same development. But what we can do is we can say, all right, well, we'll do that much extra for this project and that can be a condition of the conditional use in this way. You'll be assured that.
You get some trees.
That those trees will still be there, just in a different location.
Yeah.
How's, how's that work there, though?
My only concern is there was specific
Yeah.
talk, condition eight was specific, talking about where trees need to be placed as a barrier and you might have to go back to the supervisors asking for some sort of waiver of that.
Already approved plan, so.
Right, from cover.
Yeah, I, I don't, I didn't, I didn't go through that where, yeah, you know, the second page is kind of.
Yeah, it might be just asking them for forgiveness or, you know, whatever. Removal of that condition based upon.
Well, yeah, I mean, we want to put something in just to tear it out, it was wasteful.
And expensive, definitely wasteful. So the other thing about this is, if there's a neighbor, and it's in your listed conditions, so we're in here, I don't, I don't need to jump ahead, but there is a neighbor on the top that we, during the construction of this project, we provided access to people who live behind it, uninterrupted access. That won't be disturbed in any way from the construction of this next project, as mentioned, but they will have clear free ingress, ingress to the property.
Yeah, like, but again, we said, uh, you know, you, even if we did have to open cut this, it's still gonna access around the other side, but uh, we don't have to, we don't have to, because you installed it, so we're on the works.
Yeah, okay. It's a little tricky because the, it's, even though the projects are being merged, it was a separate additional use, so.
Yeah.
The, the, yeah, you can have to get, yeah.
I don't look like that it closed the, the door on, you know.
Yeah, I think with that, we've come by asking a, a request to remove a condition of that condition.
Right, so we're gonna wrap that up and then start anew with, let's join this parcel and.
And it might be that that they agreed to remove it as long as that this plan is approved and completed.
Yeah.
Because.
Right, because what if you get approved and you don't do it?
Exactly.
If you remove the condition and then you don't end up consolidating the lots and building your thing and now there's not the barrier that they had asked for.
Yeah.
Clean, it's done it all the time, it made life easier for everybody else.
Man, I should have just thought that. I remember when you first did it, you said we're gonna do it in two phases because we don't know, we might just build forty-eight. And then, it's funny, I think you just blew through the forty-eight, ninety-six, yeah, yeah.
You're in, you know, we're, we're.
That, you're like, where can I find thirty more?
These will be, these will be um a little bit more luxurious than the ones that we have now. We're gonna have balcony out the back and
Okay.
a little bit clearer, so it's designed, the idea is to upscale a little bit.
Dora looked at that then. Dora looked at wetland, it's nice.
Yeah, that's a, the nature preserves.
Nature preserve.
Yeah, still, still good bedroom, same size, they're not gonna change structure, we're just gonna make it instead of the two bedrooms in the rear of the building we'll have a kitchen, dining, living room straight on one side and then the bedroom, bathroom, bedroom on the other side. So you can kind of look straight out through to a balcony, have like a balcony at the back, so. Providing people want some exterior living space in addition to the courtyard, this will give them that, that option.
Yes, private outdoor space, so.
Yeah, well, that was the other, because the other, and the existing four, they would all be looking at each other, so we decided not to do that.
I think it's, yeah, or even at the time, I thought it was great to bring that kind of additional mix of housing, you know what I mean? Truly through the community. I'm glad that it filled up because it's right there by the grocery.
We're running about eighty percent.
Okay.
Occupancy right now, so it's a little bit slower absorption than we anticipated, but it's working out well of getting tenants who are well qualified, which is great. You know, we have criminal background and incumbent warrants, there's that issue, and they're well qualified people and so it's uh, that takes time to make sure you have the right harmony, you know? Dogs are becoming a little bit of an issue with the emotional support dogs are now something that you can't turn down. We try to keep dogs to a certain size, but there's some federal guidelines that say if this is an emotional support dog and it's a rock brawler, you have to let it in, so we're.
You know, let it be a dog and not something else.
Oh, yeah, right.
Since people are getting a lot of different emotional support.
Yeah, and it's a bunch of rat working out.
A rat.
Miniature, no, miniature ponies. Someone told me you get a miniature pony as a service animal. I was like, uh, hey, it's not a matter of going to a hotel with a miniature pony and then it's gonna go into the room.
Things may change, things may change a little bit, but we, we have a great, we have a great tenant.
Okay.
Case here, it's absorbing nicely, uh, we're introducing them to the community well, we're sharing all the amenities that, you know, Bill Spethfield has. And um, we're looking at now some other projects that might have um mixed use aspect to them where we have some commercial and residential and this was a great test project to see that we can get that absorption and maybe do something that will provide a little more commercial side.
Too bad, actually, for our last project, not that I should comment, but since they're turning it all to storage, I was like that, every time I saw that building on that one, I was always like if they had, you know, apartments or something upstairs and retail downstairs and then it fell.
Okay, that the one.
Marshall's Creek Square.
Across from Caesar's, the one that was gonna be this week.
It's gonna be like a movie theater, but then they built up this huge thing and then you go there and they have all these businesses, but you know.
It's perfect, that's great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, but it's a mixed, you know, the way it is mixed use now, some commercial living, some office living, some.
Yeah, people sometimes like to be near what, you know, other, like, you know, commercial services and stuff.
Great redevelopment project right here.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
So that's kind of what I'm looking at.
It was, it was a gem to start with, then, wow.
That's what we're looking at.
Yeah. Yeah, great redevelopment area.
So, didn't mean to segue, but it's going well. It's going well and uh, we're looking up together a little bit, the, the mechanics of how we do the approvals of things, we'll leave up to your council and we, it's good to have a background discussed here.
Yeah.
So that you're not blindsided when we're talking to them and everybody knows what's going on.
Right, right. Bruce, um, then you wanna go over any other, uh.
Of the existing conditions here?
Anything else that you wanted to touch on?
Yeah, alright.
Uh, let me just briefly.
It seems that most of the existing conditions would be applicable except for the properly orders.
And then we would just obviously add to this any of the tree requirements we removed from the original plan.
We'll submit a landscape plan with this.
Yeah, with the land development.
With this land development plan, yeah.
Uh, mailbox, the same location, right part of the building?
Part of the buildings, uh, everybody will have their own plus package walkers in there. We can get them in groups of twelve or you know, so we had, I think, two in Broadway, twenty-four in this case, we have three.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Um, pedestrian trail status on that?
That dirt that's stockpiled there is in the way of the access to the trail system. We could actually put that in now, but we will we can talk about putting two accesses there, but we plan on having that.
I just wasn't sure, I wasn't aware of the, the story on that one, so I just.
Yes, it's there, trails, you know, trail access there, but it's really the stockpile of dirt sitting in front of it.
Yeah, then one dumpster location suitable for.
We'll have to. We'll have to talk to the waste management company and see if they feel it's gonna be better to have a second and then Sal would draw. You know, a location here or expand on the one that's there as part of the land development, it's a good comment.
Okay.
Because there are quite a few people there now and, you know, you can only increase the frequency by so much. Twice a week, and if you're beyond that, then we'll have to have a second, so we'll get waste managements and put on it and find out if they need it. Put one, an additional one where it is, put one back as a backup.
They know that there'd be pretty sprawling apartment complexes, still with a single drop-off location, it really is more so a matter of the number. Or the size of the containers that you're getting and the.
Luckily, we get a pretty good pattern there, right, I think it was the.
Yeah, we're swiveling, yeah, and if we sacrifice any additional parking spaces there as a result of making that larger, you may have to put in a second one, so.
Okay.
So maybe, maybe.
Spot.
Yeah, yeah, so maybe that much is simply modifying it to make reference to any additional dumpster areas that are put in would be similar to landscape. Screen, so I would see that worded that way, so. I, I didn't have any else, I don't know if there was talk about with the landscaping, I mean, the way I worded it, the, the review letter is, I didn't think there was a need. For instance, you're no longer screening it from a joint property, I know Sal is graciously offering, this is provide additional. Trees or whatever elsewhere in developments, I don't know one way or the other, you know, additional plantings would be. A, a suitable condition or if it's just a matter of it's no longer applicable and the other standards already in the ordinance are sufficient. Like the, you know, required, uh, trees for parking space, the parking area, et cetera.
Were the, were the trees that were going to be put as the barrier, were they part of your numbers necessary to meet your other requirements on the lot? Or they were only there for the barrier requirement?
I thought some of them were, when we did it originally, you, some of them were, and then we had, you guys, you might have added some more.
They were very. More danger in the.
It was.
Overall, right, they're evergreen.
It, well, but, but I think the question was, was it part of the requirement or was it an additional screening for the neighbors and it was. Predominantly by requirement, but there was additional floor screening on both sides.
I do remember that.
So that was added above and beyond the requirement.
Alright, so I mean, I would think that the thought would be that you have to meet the requirements. But that the additional that were necessary for screening wouldn't no longer be.
Right, and so it's basically the end goal is make sure that the landscaping plan would be compliant for the overall one hundred and twenty-six units. And that there's not any additional need beyond that for any screening or buffering or.
Yeah. I think if we figure out the mechanics, that might be easier, just to throw a couple of pushes.
Yeah, but I think we wanted to look nicer, what we discovered is that Middle Smithfield has some pretty hungry deer. You know, that, uh, the plants that were supposed to be deer proof or resistant weren't necessarily. So we might want to even look at a different species on occasion.
It doesn't really matter what species, I try to come on a property, they get hungry there.
So we, we replace some shrubs, go for cars, so.
So we got pretty much good with these comments then?
Yeah, I didn't see anything in here that, um, certainly, um. Yeah, that's it, yeah.
Yeah, again, mostly the, the mechanics.
I guess we'll wanna talk to your, um. Maybe fire chief or, uh, you know, you could send the plan to him to get his comments. Uh, just, you know, Ben, Ben mentioned this to the, to get his, the, the understanding of this, we, we'll do. A turning radius to show, you know, the fire trucks a- access in, you know, so that that can happen and then that turning radius is, is navigable for the. For the fire trucks, uh, but let's see if he really wants this for emergency access or, um, you know, best, if you're like, you'd be better to just have him. Back up here, this, this is really close proximity, I mean, to be honest with you, they could probably pull, if there's a fire here, they could probably.
There's a lot of space there for vehicles to turn around, or this isn't a tight site at all.
Right.
So I'm sure he'll be happy with whatever we propose, and if he has a comment about where he'd like a fire hydrant or something like that, we'll make sure that they're accommodated.
Because Ben, that was your, your comment, right, you'd actually like to see that removed, so it doesn't, or. So does it come in extra access onto Mount Nevo where people are just turning in, I like that, that idea.
For that as well.
I think we, I'm trying to remember when this first came in a sketch plan. I don't even know that, there might have been something in narrative that spoke to the placement of like, uh, grass pavers or something like that for the access. That I don't think really showed up on the plan so much, then I, I think we just kind of talked about it, I didn't see a comment in the review letter. About it, and then I think, I don't know if I kind of gave a direction, or maybe it should be paved instead, so I might flip lot myself a little bit. But in, in talking with, um, Damon Drum in our transportation group, he was saying like. Two driveways that close is just gonna lead to confusion, he's like, I don't think it's necessary and even the ordinance tends to. It's not explicit, but it seems to apply at once a limit of two driveways to a single frontage. Um, so I, unless the fire chiefs really ask for it, I think it's just gonna clean it up, I don't think it's that cumbersome of an access for them to get in and out of. When a fire roars, so.
I agree.
Yeah, it'll eliminate the potential for people to go in there and then realize, well, there's a gate, you're gonna back up on.
On to Mount Nevo.
Yeah, it's not a great road, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got too many.
So, so Sal, this is, uh, do you have this available electronically?
Uh, yeah, I can send this to you.
It would, you know what, the good procedure would be, when, when we get a, a submittal, that we, we copy the fire chief on. Electronic as, as an email, and then whatever comments, they can just respond on that and this whole, um, chain there that we can follow. How does that sound?
Followed that?
Yeah, I don't, it, I, I don't have a problem with it, it's just that I don't know if the chief is gonna know necessarily what he's looking at.
Hmm.
Well.
Not in a.
We can meet with him as well, if you want us to handle.
Not in a mean way, but if I got this, I wouldn't necessarily know the question or the comments of whether or not I need that entrance, is an entrance, is it not an entrance? Those other entrances being sufficient, he'd have it, so when someone called him, he would have something to reference for a conversation. But just by getting the plan, he wouldn't know what, they wouldn't know what it is that you want to know from them specifically.
But it's a start.
It is a start and they would have.
Think of how we can do this efficiently, you know, so that they can.
And maybe that's part of a conversation with the fire company, how can we make this happen easier with you?
Right, yeah.
And if, if you gave me a email address, I could send it to him with the narrative saying that the planning commission and their engineer. Had these concerns about, about our, uh, development, they're concerned with the close proximity of the third driveway on.
Copying live, copying live.
Yeah, I'll see, see you guys on it and, uh.
Yeah.
So you can verify that what I'm saying is accurate.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and then you can get back to us that way and then everyone's informed and, uh, yeah, so.
It's a good start, maybe, you know, he, he'd wanna go out to the site or whatever.
Yeah, and I think it makes sense for the township to develop some sort of procedure for the communication with the, the, or a busy person.
Because we always say it, but there's no, you know.
I wouldn't feel bad, and I don't know Sal's experience, you know, being on the other side of things, it's always us fishing for that information, trying to find her, so. I've never had, you know, municipality hand it to me on a silver platter, so, but if we, you know, I, I think. Any step taken to help simplify that process, I'm sure would be welcome on there.
Because you're dealing with volunteer fire companies.
Oh, yeah, they're busy with a variety of other things as well.
Okay, so Sal, email it to me, give me my email, I'll forward it to him, I'll reach out and. Right, hit his email, I'll forward it to him, and then put all copy on it, and so it's, so it's simple.
We don't do it tonight, it's gonna be one of those, yeah.
It was a good idea, but we never did anything about it. Hopefully we have an answer on that before meeting with the board, because that'll make the conversation a little more streamlined in this year.
What's the conditional use here?
Uh, it's the first meeting in August, so.
And so is your, uh, to clarify that you're in this area, we need to get, are we able to get all this breathing outside of the inner buffer? Uh, you think that would satisfy any concerns that?
I mean, honestly, it's always a tough thing with these conditional uses, right, because some of the conditions wind up just being kind of like reemphasizing. Other ordinance requirements that are gonna come up with land development, uh, it'll ultimately have to be a modification during land development, so. Does it have to be a condition? I, I don't think it does, uh, it was just something noted at this point, so.
Cause it would just come up during the.
Yeah, and, and it will probably come up as part of that conversation.
And, you know, to make things a little bit cleaner, you know, about the, going back, I apologize to jump back to that. Landscape buffer for the peri-erret property, since it wasn't. Part of the required amount of trees, but it was a buffer to the neighbor.
Yeah.
Which we now own and we really don't require the buffer, maybe we should just go in and ask them to. And the reason is, it's become quite a big issue for me in that from a banking and finance standpoint. They leaned my investments counts for, um, a lot of money to, they won't release it. Until I have final COs.
Right.
And we have COs, but until that condition is either removed and then final, because, uh, Julia Costa can issue the final COs.
Yeah.
What's the status on your financial security further?
Uh, it's been reduced as we go, there's still, there's still a balance that covers that, that we cover that anyway, yeah.
So it's, it's already guaranteed, but it's just, they're, they're also holding this certificate of, or final certificate of occupancy.
So, I mean, it's guaranteed. Over those shrubs, not over the.
Yeah, we're finding.
In, in, in there until it gets installed or taken away.
And, and was it, is, is it just the shrubs? Cause there's also, I mean, I guess you could have this conversation with them, but I thought there was. The way you shifted, there's some of the trees that were meant for just the planting purposes or some of the landscape, right, or no, was it?
No, originally, I think it was. Originally there were, uh, along the two oh nine side, there might have been twelve shrubs, we put those in.
Okay.
So they, it might have been both in the review letter, but now it's just the ones around there.
But so, and, and everything in that is, so you already met your, in terms of our Sal, that you've already met the minimum. Tree plantings, or was, was there some of that that was gonna be done?
On the peri-erret property?
Yeah, was it some that was, I thought there was like a couple of big ones that were in that thing.
I think it was all shrubs here, but it was, they were, they're closely located and they're all root of engine and mountain.
Well, there's no, there's no trees there.
The interesting thing is.
Tree throughout here, out in front of the buildings, in front of the buildings there, uh, and, you know, they've all been installed out here, so all. All the actual trees, I, I believe have been installed.
Yeah, and now that we've acquired this peri-erret property, actually has a number of beautiful trees on it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Fruit trees, so he has, I, you know.
But like, we had the discussion at the time and then we still, you're right, so it did have all the trees that you were gonna preserve and then we said we would also like to see shrubs. So I think you're right, all those shrubs were literally something to be added as a condition because that was a separate property.
He has, he has, what I'm saying is that we go to the next phase of a land development plan. He's got quite a collection of trees, so even if we got approvals and didn't do it, there's a lot of beautiful, nice trees on that property.
Yeah.
Let's see how it checks out.
Okay, yeah, again, just.
For grander scale things, this is a forty acre property and we're starting, this, I believe this is about five acres here and we have like. There's gonna be over fifteen acres is required for open space as it is, but, you know, we're, we're probably like thirty.
Yeah.
Thirty acres of under-stirred forest that will remain under-stirred.
Right.
So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of, you know, one of the comments is that twenty percent vegetation is, needs to be, they were. Well, like sixty, seventy percent, so.
Okay, thank you, alright, so, uh, just, we wanna make a motion here then, uh. Would someone like to make a motion on this conditional use?
I'll make that motion.
And motion is to recommend approval?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll be continued.
Is it? Can I propose a motion that it would recommend, um, approval of the condition, conditional use. With the same condition, um, as in the previous conditional use?
Yeah.
Yeah. Approval, um, with the exception of condition number eight.
This way.
Yeah, that would be, that's what we want to.
That's right, um, the only one I would say is sixteen, uh, modified to include any additional dumpster areas that maybe. Provided, like.
But it says the dumpster area, so if there's a dumpster area on this plan, then that.
I think it's gonna cover it, okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Cool, good, good, okay, that's the motion, do we have a second?
I'd say.
Any comments or questions? All on paper? opposed?
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Nice to see you all, guys.
And I'll reach out, I, we were, been talking over here, I'll, I'll reach out to the, split over to the board supervisors as well regarding. That you and see if you can.
Yeah, it'd be nice.
No. Um, Bryn, Beecher.
Griffin and Thatcher, yes.
We're just gonna talk over each other here.
And, uh, I don't know if we're into, there was maybe a thing about taking, uh, stripping containers.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, I don't think that fits out here, but.
The shit from his data holes.
Thank you.
Break the ice.
Public comment? Okay, alright, uh, next meeting is, uh, August twenty-fourth. Um, obtain a motion to adjourn, I make a motion to adjourn in a second, sir. Okay, motion second, any comments or questions, all in favor? Thanks, everyone.
I must have, must have missed the point about new business. That was quite unexpected. Hi, good eve, good evening, commission, my name is Stefan Loukiki. I'm the president of the Summer Glen at the Poconos Community right across the road on Imperial Drive.
Okay.
And I've, I've been listening to, uh, the whole meeting and the plans, um. My fellow homeowners and myself, we have a, a concern about overbuilding and overdeveloping the area. This past weekend, I myself was out around eleven o'clock in the afternoon, both Saturday and Sunday. Milford Road, State Route two oh nine, uh, roughly between Imperial, uh, where the township building is. And Sellersville, uh, the Wendy's and the Wawa. The road is like a parking lot during that time. And I know it's summertime now, I know we get a lot of visitors up here. But with the addition of the tractor supply place, addition of the Dollar General, you have a lot of cars. Just right there alone, trying to get in and out of those locations, the tractor supply store has a lot of vehicles on the weekend, I've noticed. Coming in with trailers, I'm talking about not tractor trailers, but personal vehicles carrying trailers in order to pick up. Supplies from the store, they're trying to cross the double yellow line, holding up the traffic while the traffic on the other side is not allowing them to go. Um, just in, as, as an example, my normal trip to, let's say, go to Wawa from Imperial would take about twenty minutes round trip. My trip on Saturday took me forty-five minutes. Sunday, it took me forty minutes. Um, I, I, I just, I'm bringing this up just to keep this in mind as you consider large projects for the area. I noticed the, uh, the shopping center, you're talking about the development there. You're talking about adding, uh, more apartment buildings, bringing more people to the area, but. The single lane, both direction road was never designed for high volume. And high volume of people coming to big commercial stores, um, with the type of vehicles that they do. So I'm just asking the commission to bear this in mind when you consider these larger projects for development. At some point, um, you have to say, well, is it, is it worth it, what do we have to do to deal with this increased traffic? That we're improving the area for, but the road cannot handle it.
I want, one, one comment I have is that, uh, two oh nine is, is PND. Um, and, and when the projects come in, there are traffic studies that are done. And PND sets the requirements for accessing those projects. We have no say in it at all, tractor supply or Wawa or any of them, so. Uh, that, that, I think you should take that concern to PND.
It, it's not so much that the road itself, it's, it's the overdevelopment of the area is our concern. We didn't have this prior to, let's say, COVID and the influx of the New York and the New. We didn't have this prior to, let's say, COVID and the influx of the New York and the New Jersey people who moved up here. Uh, we didn't have this prior to tractor trailer supply and the Dollar General being built in that location. Uh, I myself have lived up here continuously for the past nine years. Um, traveling that road daily. So this is, this is all in the last. Few years since the development of those particular properties, as well as the influx of the people from. Um, yeah, I guess you call it the COVID migration up here. So I, it's, again, it's, it's not so much. Uh, for Pendo, I, it's just overdeveloping the area that I want you to be mindful of. Can the area handle everything, every large project that you're looking at?
Okay, thank you for sharing. Anything else?
That's it, thank you for your time, thank you for allowing me to add this at the end of the meeting.
Sure.
Can you, can you say, spell your last name for me?
Absolutely, it's Lewick, L E W I C K I.
Thank you.
Thank you, Port, have a good evening.
Thank you. I would, I would make another motion to it.
Okay, I made a motion to a chair, so. All in favor, uh, okay.
Alright, thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
I I did wanna comment on the topic, I did wanna comment on the topic and I cut in on growing up, trying to get anywhere.
Yeah.
Okay.
A lot of it is my house on the gap. The lights that they're putting down.
Well, well, so now.
I'm just, I'm just saying.
At tractor supply, it is, well, I mean, but that's because they're doing the improvements, I think, but. But honestly, I have not seen that anymore, I don't know how tractor supply's staying in business, but I don't see how many people turn in there, like their parking lot is.
Traffic on two oh nine was significantly worse in the eighties and nineties than it is.
Yeah, yeah.